Alderman Carr wants to go through the changes she recommends.
I'm gonna try and make this as brief as possible. I have been emailing Mr. Marzal and Ms. Hunt for approximately two months and most of my emails have gone completely unanswered. And so, I've made some of my own judgments. I adjusted the revenue accounts to be more in line with the revenue that we received last year. They increased revenue in several areas and I don't see where that money is specifically going to come from. So I adjusted the revenue down to something that we can more reasonably expect to come in. I removed all the COLA and merit raises for managers and appointees. I took out the office services fees which were a private company that was proposed to be used other than Blue Cap for cleaning in the offices. I reduced or eliminated expense accounts that had not been used in the previous year. I reduced non-essential expenditures such as dues, memberships, and training. I took out unemployment costs projections because we have not had that previously. I reduced software expenses. I eliminated the police radio contingency because they put radio expenses in the regular appropriation. So their radio costs aren't included but there's no reason for contingency on the bottom I removed the EMA salary. I did a study of the surrounding communities and based on what other communities are doing, we don't need an increase in salary and we cannot afford it. I have a worksheet if anyone is interested in seeing that. Most of the surrounding communities don't even have an EMA department or they have a volunteer EMA department. I reduced salaries in the building department. In 2017, they were $95,000 and 2018, they were $110,000 and now all of a sudden, they're asking for $243,000. That's double what was spent last year. I reduced the water expenses from Chicago. Our costs went down last year. And I reduced engineering fees in the water department. I believe that the high cost in 2018 will not repeat itself. I think that was the, and correct me if I'm wrong Eric, I think that was the case in on 127th Street that all those engineering fees went into every pair of that.
Sure, there were a number of unexpected water problems.
And all the other reductions were just a result of overall belt tightening. I got the income to balance with the expected expenditures. Uh, let's see. So on my projection, we should be receiving $29,480,900 and our expenses out should
And this is to provide about $450,000 and change for street resurfacing repair. Money has to come from somewhere, there's only so much out there. So there wasn't any budgeted for street resurfacing. These are all projected numbers. It's an appropriation budget, it's not a tax levy. So it's all what we think's coming in and what we think's going out. And at very least now with Alderman Carr's recommendations, we provide for $450,000 of street resurfacing. But roughly, I mean, it all changes per block, but roughly it'll do a decent sized street in town of eight to 10 blocks if we're just talking resurfacing. So we gotta start somewhere. Right now in the budget that was proposed, there was zero amount in there for street resurfacing. By making these cuts and changes, eliminating raises for some of the staff, we're able to start somewhere by paving probably the worst streets in town. At least start somewhere. So that's the goal.
Again, as we all know, there is a meeting tomorrow. I think it should be addressed tomorrow.
I got a question Chief. Alderman Carr, you listed our first responders. Was there a cut in their training or can you elaborate?
Which, what line are you talking about?
I was talking about you saying that it was a cut in the police department and fire department training.
I didn't, I didn't say I cut police and fire department training. There's a lot of training. I mean, there was some cuts there, but there's a lot of training, educational things that were in general administrative. I imagine people being sent to seminars and whatnot, but a lot of that never happened. And let me go to the police department. I did cut their training down to $10,500. And in the fire department, I actually left their training where it is. I reduced it a little bit, but it's still more than the previous year.
So that EMS training in there that normally costs us about $900 a month, that in the appropriations, or did you?
Which EMS training?
The software training.
Alderman Hasling.
Yes. Alderman Carr, first of all, I'd like to say that under CPA?
No, but I said 14 years isn't a CPA here.
Okay. We had two CPAs go over these appropriations, okay? Secondly, Alderman Carr, did you ever go to the department heads and ask them for their input?
You did.
Have you come in like last year? Mr. Donahue was going, "Oh, I'm gonna cut here and I'm gonna cut there." You didn't? Did you go to it? Oh, you did.
I'm now meeting in Chief King's office.
In Chief King's office. What about Chief Rita's office?
I made very few cuts.
What about the business?
Let me do this.
The business department would not answer my emails. I have this folder full of emails that the business department did not.
Did you try making a phone call?
I did and I got voicemail. I'm sorry.
Otherwise, the budget has no money for street repairs in it. The budget that was presented has zero money on street repairs.
And any, would you?
No, we're trying to.
Well, is there a vote on what?
I need a vote on the amendment. Is there a motion? There's a second.
I need a, it's Hawley. No. Hawley, no. Fairwell.
No.
Fairwell, no. Hasling.
No.
Hasling, no. Thompson.
No.
Carr.
Yes.
Carr, aye.
Aye.
Pittman.
Aye.
Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no.
Aye.
Bellato, aye.
No.
Viera, no. Three i's and five. Three i's and six. Three i's and six no's.
Now I need a motion to adopt the appropriation order that's listed here. Is there a motion? My motion by Alderman Hasling, is there a second? Alderman Tom Hall. Any questions? Alderman Carr, go ahead.
I have a whole folder full of questions here, Your Honor. First of all, I sent an email pointing out that under revenue line 30005 and 3140 under the 08000 designation, that these numbers had been transposed and I asked, is this not an error? How can we vote on something that's an error? The only person that answered me was Mr. Myers who said, yes, it is an error and it should be corrected. It was not corrected. It's still on this document, uncorrected, and we're talking about millions of dollars.
Any other questions? Chief, yes, go ahead.
Ms. Marzal, I believe the MFT fund is, the street repairs were put in there. Is that correct?
Yes, we have funding in MFT for repair also, all repairs and some repairs in our TIF area, correct?
We're not discussing TIF though. The MFT though is salt, patch, cold patch. How much money is in there for the salt and cold patch? And do you want to call street repairs, not replacement? How much is in there right now in your budget?
Overall, in the MFT, we have $600,000.
All right, and about half of that is salt and patching and other?
Salt has its own line.
And the TIF funds can't, I'm not talking about replacing TIF streets. We're talking about streets that are not in TIF, not in CDVJ eligible, which is about 40 percent of town.
We're also proposing purchasing a skid steer and grinder which will be able to give the lane pass for the streets which.
Which is patching and repair, yeah.
Not replacing the streets, but it's a step that we're trying to make.
So we got people to, are we, do we have people trained for to do that?
We will be having training on this. And my goal is to have everyone every single day that they can be out there handling all the asphalt and that sort of.
So are we looking at purchasing these things or are we looking to rent?
Purpose.
Actually, because we're looking at trying to replace the streets, period, because, you know, we didn't patch Blue Island until it was leaking.
This would be a purchase of this question.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Fairwell.
Aye.
Fairwell, aye.
Aye.
Hasling.
Aye.
Hasling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Five i's and four no's. So are we gonna have a quorum enough on either tomorrow or Thursday to pass this? Because we have no spending the Thursday after this weekend. City Hall for sure will be closed April 1st.
I know for a fact some other one can't make it the next two nights, so.
Who won?
This has got to be done by Sunday morning.
City Hall will be closed April 1st if we can just pass this.
Well, perhaps they should have answered some questions and this would make more sense.
Or we can hammer this out right now and there's a couple of demands that I think are reasonable. We shouldn't be giving out raises in the state of affairs the city is in. And we shouldn't be, we should dedicate additional funds for street resurfacing, find the money somewhere. There's only so much money out there, we gotta make cuts somewhere. And no raises is the goodst place to start. Obviously, unions have to give theirs because contractual, we're talking management, non-union employees.
Alderman Hasling.
If we're gonna cut, why don't we cut something like the water center?
No! 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 No!
Well, I couldn't speak to the clerk's office.
Cut the golf course. Right, cut the golf course. Cut that. More your part.
We sink a billion dollars almost a year into the golf course that only yield $5,000 in profit. That don't even make sense, period.
God, we're losing the golf course. We've just lost money for years and years.
The other thing is, I've been asking for forensic audit almost since I've been an alderman, which ain't went anywhere. That's why I don't agree with the finance or the treasurer's report until we get for real and find out where this money is going to and where it should go.
What money went in the previous administration?
As well.
That's way off.
As well. Golf course keeps being brought up. In the past three, four years, the golf course has paid positive money. It's paid for itself. This past year, we paid $65,000 towards the water, $50,000 to the previous bond or debt to the corporate. Previous year, we paid $50,000. Okay? So the golf course is a benefit to the city, okay? It's breaking even because before it was mismanaged.
Okay, that's.
The other thing is, the other part was the rec center. Years back, the rec center was being, on the levy, recreation was a separate tax item. And we were getting approximately $116,000, $180,000 for recreation purposes for the levy. In the past, before, six years, eight years, or 10 years ago, whatever, that was eliminated from the levy. So it's incorporated inside our levy program. Okay? So the previous year, didn't really have a budget. They only asked that, like, they only added $20-some thousand dollars. My recommendation was $120. $120, basically, there's no other expenses over there because the park district works together, okay? They do all the service, all the recreation parks. It's, again, it's an asset to that community, to the whole of Blue Island. Again, worth to service people, fire, police, public works, they're service oriented. The taxes that we don't take in does not pay for those services. Okay? The three main incomes that the city has, sales tax, income tax, property tax. Property tax is the one, number one. Number two, revenue, tax revenue, income tax. Okay, those are the two things we, the third one is minimum. And out of the property tax, we only receive 17 percent or 18 percent of that property tax when you look at your tax bills. So you pay taxes because of the school districts. Why don't we get 17 percent, 18 percent the most? Again, I want to clarify to the, to the corporate, it's easy to eliminate, you have to know the true figures. That's all I'm gonna say.
Alderman Thompson.
I would like to direct this to the treasurer. I would ask a question. Who made for the water at the golf course?
In the pen?
Yeah, in the pen. And currently now, who pays for it?
Currently, we're paying now. The, the, the golf course.
The golf course not paying for that water. When did it start?
Two years ago.
And prior to that, who paid for it?
Because before it was, it was mismanaged.
That's why we needed a aye.
Mismanaged?
That's why we needed a aye.
We've got that off the town. It's been mismanaged for years and years and years. Under the old administration, it was mismanaged.
And now it's managed correctly and we're making money.
No, it's not. No, it's not. Come on, treasurer. Just tell the truth.
Let me, let me get a.
Tell the truth and change the devil.
I just wanted to reflect a little bit on the recreation center. When I was fighting pretty much by myself to get that thing put back together and ran correctly. But we have a, the park district comes down there and run programs out of, out of the recreation center, uses our electricity or whatever, whatever, right? And they charge per kid or per head for whatever event they do. Not one dime comes back to Blue Island. So they actually squat more or less to save. And I think, and the recreation center wasn't built to make money, but it was some things I formulated, like when we got a new roof to put solar panels on that so it could pay for something, you know, itself. But I think, you know, as I was, had been saying, when Mayor Vargas and the new administration actually came in, how much money we were in debt from the old administration. And nobody said anything about trying to correct that or find out where the money was leaking. So how can we continue to tax the communities for some things we don't even know what the heck is happening? So that's why I still stand by this, this audit today and forever.
Alderman Carr?
The problem we're having here is that, you know, we all, I think probably would all agree that we'd like to cut the budget, but when we start to talk about what are we gonna cut, well, no, not that. No, not that. Because they're hard decisions. Everything here is just, we're running on the bone basically to the city. Yeah, I'll talk for a minute. I want to talk about the increases to the, to the non-union employees. Director Marzal, please correct me if I, if I'm wrong or anything, but if I'm looking at the numbers right, you know, we're talking about on the COLA adjustment, something like 40, I don't know, 45, under $45,000 total for that increase. That would pave about 100 feet of street. About 100 feet. If the 3 percent increase was fully deployed, which it would not be, that would buy us another 100 feet. Director Marzal has made the point that the city staff, and they do work hard, has not received an increase and these are fairly modest. So, you know, okay, we could cut that. That's another place we can cut. I question how wise it is because I know I hear about what are they overpaid and everything, but, you know, we really do want the city staff to have some incentive to do a good job and being paid, you know, a decent wage and having your work, you know, respected and appreciated through a very modest increase is one way to make that happen. I think any good, I run a business and as a manager, I know that's true. So we could cut it, you know, save ourselves, I guess, $85,000 and cap ourselves 200 feet of worse street.
Yeah.
Okay? And if you think that's, you know, that's, that's a judgment call. But these are all the things we're looking at here and we're trying to do it in, I don't know, a few hours. And a lot of our city council isn't here tonight and this is an important night. I made a point again here. So, you know, it, it just occurs to me that this is not, this doesn't seem to be like a particularly good exercise right now that we're going through. We're not, we're not really identifying things that are well thought out, I guess, and don't have the time to digest an amendment that comes to us tonight. I mean, so there's like 80 percent of the lines are changed. I think we need to hammer this out somehow. I would be a yes vote if we do not give any raises for our non-union staff and we find some money for street repairs. Until those two things are met, I'm not putting a dollar amount on it, I'm a no vote. And I was saying this last year too, just not as loudly because we had bigger issues, but we gotta start somewhere. A few hundred feet of street is a couple thousand feet of alley if you want to compute it that way, or if there's no sewer issues or curb and gutter issues, it could be a few blocks of street. Every street's different. But I agree with Alderman Fairwall, it's not a lot considering how many miles of street we need done, but some, some.
And I'm looking at capital funds too. We got state reps and senators who just need to look out more for the city. Every time election time come, they ask for us to give them a vote they need to put in.
Mr. Marzal, I want to make a brief statement about the document. I want to thank Chair Treasurer Bellato, Clerk Hoizer, Chief King, Chief Rita and Chief King's staff as well, Jim Postrel, Janelle Howard, and all of our staff. We put a lot of time and effort into the documentation together. I know we had an appropriations workshop a little bit ago. I want to thank everyone who participated in that and gave us good feedback then. I also want to echo what Ray says. Yes, we need to have something passed before April 30th, or March 30th rather. Otherwise, we will not be able to open our doors and turn on our lights come the first. And just, I know this was said before, I'll say again, this is an appropriation, this is what we have the authority to spend up to. We have a track history over the past few years of spending much less than what we've appropriated. And staff meets on a quarterly basis, sometimes even more, to review what our revenues are and our expenditures. And if we see that our revenues are not coming in the way that we anticipated, we do not dispatch it on certain projects or make certain capital purchases. So just to reiterate, I would like to see something passed. It's vital that something gets passed before the 30th and.
I fear that we won't have quorum is the problem. The next couple of minutes.
They get paid to do a job, don't they? Don't go home and get paid.
Me and you do not, Mr. Thompson.
No, you and I don't get paid. You're right. If I, as old as I am and I don't get paid, I don't know what in the hell is wrong with them. Why don't they do their job and show up and vote? If I don't have to get paid, the rest of them should come in here and do their job and represent the constituents. Mr. Mayor, you need to, you need to ante up a T side.
Any other?
Oh, yeah, I think we could have probably came to a more collective answer and agreement on this appropriations. The last meeting, I'm sorry, Alderman Bellato asked for this information and they said, they said they was gonna provide it very nicely. We didn't give it to three or four days later. Also, you know, I know things happen, that's just called life, but we talking about as aldermen constantly just, you know, trying to make, you know, solid decisions. We need time to look at this. You know what I'm saying? This is not something you just throw on the table and say that three, two, because after all, it comes out of constituents' pockets.
May I? It upsets me that we have this going on. How long till, have we been trying to meet with everyone? How long have we stressed to our other aldermen that they had any concerns or questions to come to our meetings? We had a special appropriation seminar which some of the aldermen did not show up. It's not fair to our constituents, it's not fair to us to come to the deadline of appropriating something. This is like once an alderman said, it's just a wish list. It's not that we're going to spend that much amount of money, we just need an approval. Do we not want the city to still work, move forward? Why do we have to have this fight among us instead of being a city that works together as a team? Why do we have to have constant meeting of appropriation amended, table it, amended, table it? Wait, Alderman Carr, could you not go to their offices and speak to them?
I was just gonna read you this email. I sent this to Mike Marzal and Janelle Hunt on March the 6th.
But did you go?
It says.
Did you go?
No, because I work and they leave at 4 o'clock.
I work too.
It says, Mike, the appropriations show a surplus of funds equal to $1,891,244.
Our actual cash position. You can do it during your one time.
Has decreased by $1,964,57. That's a difference of $3,851,701. Can you provide a reconciliation for this? As alderman, we need an accurate picture of how much money was actually spent.
How many times?
I got no reply.
Are you aware of the meetings we've had?
I have been to those meetings and I've asked for the same thing with no raises and that wasn't adjusted at all. Street resurfacing money, I asked at our general committee meeting and they weren't changed. So I was there and those changes weren't made.
I came to one finance meeting.
She came one time and that was it.
I was not allowed to ask any questions until the very end of the meeting, at which point it was basically pointless because I was not a committee member.
Well, that's how it works.
Well.
You sit on, you sit on that committee, you speak and then afterwards.
If an alderman comes to one of my committee and they want to ask a question in the middle of the meeting, I let them ask a question with respect to them as alderman. I don't say, oh, you have to wait till the end of the meeting when the meeting is over. At any rate, I then.
How long have we been going on with this? Months, two months, and now we're waiting until the very end and now we're told that some of these aldermen, because they have other important things to do.
I come to every meeting when I'm asking.
I'm sorry. Why do we have aldermen that do not show up? Yeah, why? Why? Mr. Mayor, you gotta do something.
I don't think that has any bearing to trying to compromise right now. That's, that's no bearing. We're here, we have quorum, so.
And prior, the last hour, the sampling and correction?
Yep. Five days later, I resend the email to Mr. Marzal, Ms. Hunt, and Alderman Fairwall. And I said, the surplus of funds have shrunk on this appropriations because they issued a new one by $725,000. I'm gonna round it off, $725,000. That still puts us.
I'm sorry. Off $3,126,000 from reconciling with our cash position.
Are there reconciling items that still need to be added or subtracted? That was back in March and I received no answer.
We need to pass this.
Let's, let's finish the roll call and then I'll make another motion to see if we can get this done.
Roll call is done.
Roll call is done.
We board both down? I thought we were not. The question of the.
No.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for what?
To approve what was submitted with the exception of giving out zero increases for all non-union staff. That's my motion. We board it down or yes, but that's, I'm moving a lot.
Do we have a second? Alderman, Mr. Johnson?
Alderman Johnson. Roll call.
Could I just clarify what the alderman just, what was the, how are you adjusting?
Zero increases for all non-union staff for this fiscal year.
That's the only change you want to appropriate?
I'm trying to be easy, all right? I'm making a motion to approve this, zeroing out any raises for non-union staff. Because that eighty thousand dollars then will be transferred to street repairs, which would kill two birds in the same ocean. So, we have something.
There's a motion, there's a second roll call.
Holly.
No.
Farinwald, no. Hossling.
Friend, this is all the non-union, all the employees in the city clerk's office.
The list that Janelle sent to me, the list that Ms. Janelle sent to me, I would, no raise on that list. Do I add a list up? Do you have that with me?
I'll go down the line, you may be going.
It's a list that was emailed to all aldermen.
You don't want Ms. Hunt?
No changes.
Ms. Hunt, read the list.
I don't think we need a list of individual names, but it's a list that was sent out to all the aldermen, so non-union staff. Because there's twenty names on there, so...
I hear.
You could say the, with the, no, you could, your motion, you could say with a salary schedule presented by the finance department.
So, what they make now and what they asking for, let me use bottom line.
We keep it easy. I don't think we have to go name by name, but the salary schedule is provided to us by the finance department. No adjustments, no increases, and the remaining balance that's in the budget will be transferred to street repair. Do I need to clarify it anymore?
Can we, the remaining balance left?
The money taken that's in the appropriation for those increases is transferred to street repair.
I would prefer, I would prefer to find something else and give, and at least give a motion for two percent. The motion first to amend, okay, motion to amend appropriation ordinance as presented to eliminate raises for non-union personnel and transfer the total of that, those funds to street repairs somewhere. Did I say that? That would be your motion.
That's...
That's a, have this motion, and there's a second on the margin. The motion would be first to amend the appropriation to eliminate raises or wage increases for all non-union personnel and transfer the total of those funds to street repairs.
Yes.
But again, it would be street repairs that don't fall under any TIFs.
It would be seven-three-three-zero, and if the mayor wants to add that, we can add it to streets that do not fall under TIFs.
TIFs or...
CBG.
Sure. Or that.
Okay.
All right, guys, a motion, you need a second for that motion, so have a second from Alderman Johnson.
And then I started roll call, but I can read it if you want.
Yes, because it's, it says, start the roll call again. Roll call.
Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Farinwald.
No.
Farinwald, no. Hossling.
No.
Hossling, no. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Yes.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Stone, aye. Four.
Can I, can I...
Four, aye.
Go ahead. We can raise it to all of them.
So, Alderman Bellato, if, maybe we can give non-union two percent raise and cut something else.
I'm all ears.
Thirty thousand from the...
I'm all ears.
Or from, what was the thirty thousand for the fire department vehicles?
Ambulance.
That's ambulance, thirty thousand dollars.
That's the whole of the ambulance to run for it.
Well, I am, you want to cut.
Sorry, so I'll be off the nose. I had eyes before today's meeting, even since we started. I have a skeleton list ready to go to start cutting every single department. So, we can go that route too.
Because I'd rather, I'd rather keep our ambulance. We already, you know, short-staffed in some situation, we talking about first responders. That's the difference between somebody having a heart attack, heart attack and being saved, and we bickering over, over that. That's ridiculous. EMS, police, fire, our first responders, we need to take care of them. In other words, we can't take care of the city.
And home security.
And home and security, correct.
Alderman Carr, go ahead.
How can we separate? In the police department, under eighty-fifty vehicles, the, I don't know if you want to call it the original appropriations, it says ninety thousand dollars. I had a conversation with Treasurer Bellato, he said thirty-five thousand per vehicle is more than enough. Now, I would say...
What you want to say, Alderman Carr?
Line eighty-fifty under vehicles for the police department. It says ninety thousand dollars on the appropriation that I put together. I had talked, spoken with Treasurer Bellato, and he said thirty-five thousand per vehicle was more than enough.
To outfit it and everything?
No.
No. That's, that's...
Go ahead.
Kind of go suggestions. We eliminated all of the unemployment that was suggested earlier. We're totaling that up right now, and it's already over ten thousand.
And the complication, we can put that on, that's fifteen thousand, the appropriation from the clerk's office.
Chief Rita, you want to do that some?
Well, again, the vehicles were, that was to set aside for the event that we had to buy for ambulance or fix it.
Go ahead.
We're at, I got a bill worth six thousand dollars. I mean, that's, we're going to have to put striking and some other stuff on there cluttering for us, so we can probably certainly give a, go with one fifteen if we have to cut there.
Just as a reminder, every single department head who's here should have that list of my cuts that I suggested, up to five percent in every single department, so cough it up. Or else I'll do the cuts.
You have, what is twenty-seven? Twenty-seven.
If you guys are ready with the computing there, if Alderman Hall's adjustments were to two percent, what's the difference from the appropriation of?
Mayor, what was, what was the difference in the cuts that you were talking about making?
It was five, between two to five percent all the way across the board, every single department.
In employment?
Everything.
So, so like the clerk's office, hundred-and-fifty thousand, take out the twelve thousand for complication, which is just more cumbersome for people to look at ordinances outlined, and we can afford to do it, that's, that's twelve thousand dollars.
Like the golf course, that would exclude, telling you, why don't tell them that it would exclude?
I mean, the parking lot, we could cover my...
What's that amount?
Thirty dollars.
Really?
Was the, is there a police remodel going on or something like that? We can push that off to another year? Who would know about that? Chief, is there money in the budget for a police remodel, a nine-one center or something like that? Mike?
Each apartment, each apartment, I think the total dollar amount we have to add, we're going to each put in five, we're going to come five grand from fire, five, and...
In marketing, we cut...
And also, that also includes the red center. Every department.
What was the first twenty-seven thousand from? Unemployment.
Unemployment. So, unemployment, golf, nine-on-one.
And the two percent cola, obviously, about forty-five hundred dollars.
Forty-five hundred.
No, I can't...
Forty-five hundred.
No, we're moving, we're removing the merit completely and making just the cola two percent.
If I understand, the merit would take effect until two years from now.
Twenty-twenty, or towards the end of twenty-twenty.
Wait a minute, can, can we, Alderman Hall, can we go to the marketing department?
Right, that's what I said.
And, you know, I mean, there's a community promotion event, line seventy-eight-one.
Yeah.
Why can't we cut there?
Let me add this comment.
Let's keep the track going.
There will be no fireworks. And I already said that, so it could be there will be no Fourth of July, Third of July, so you're in it or not. There will be no fireworks, anything regarding Fourth of July, July. So, get ready for that. Because that's fifteen thousand right there. If I got to cut the New Year's Eve thing, we'll cut that, that's another fifteen thousand. That's pretty...
Do you make any recommendations, Alderman?
Well, I'm asking. So, is that where, is that where the line item where the Fourth of July and the comes on tomorrow? So...
Street should end.
And everybody can include the Christmas parade too.
No, the Christmas parade, they pay themselves.
Well, again, there's something's cost with the police and fire and all of that to secure it.
Okay, what about full-time, in, in the marketing, fifty-one, line number fifty-one-hundred, full-time salary?
That's part of power.
No.
That's part, oh, that's our, our...
Okay, wait a minute. Professional, professional consulting?
That was going to be for, I think we'd like to say...
Well...
I'm fine with it.
Maybe we don't need a new website right now.
We do.
We do, we do, but we got to cut somewhere.
We do not need everything.
That's twenty-five thousand.
That's fifteen, right?
Where are you?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, okay, all right. How do you get the final market from?
What about the difference between taking off the birds and the...
Yeah, that was just cola. Did you have a total?
No, I was waiting for the cola stuff.
Cola, would you say another forty-five?
The mayor too, what was that? We can throw that in.
Wait a minute. Another thing. You know, I'm back on marketing, line fifty-nine-twenty.
What do we do this season?
Fifteen thousand, marketing.
Well, institute the two to five percent that I'm requesting across every single thing, and then that money can go into the street.
We could do that too. Let's just go down here, these are easier. Before we do that, we can do that too, Mayor. I'm not, I'm against that. I just wait for Mike's, right now we're ninety-seven thousand without Mike's figures. All right.
Can someone list those, what, item numbers, line numbers, or you do have...
Mike is... Yeah, I was ten thousand, we're cutting the ambulance.
Alderman Hall.
Yeah. Twenty-seven thousand...
Professional consulting.
Yes, the one percent by.
That's still that website.
Twenty-seven thousand...
That's my line, okay.
Thirty thousand, between all of them.
Fifty thousand.
Nine-one.
Three.
Twenty-five thousand.
Okay. What about the merit stuff? We still got that number for you?
It was eighty-five, so I just wanted to cut it all together.
All together.
It's two percent.
The cola was forty-two, according to the sheet that we got sent. The cola was forty-two, and the merit was forty-two.
Yeah.
So, we're just saying, just going with the cola, so we're trying to cover her forty-two.
And the merit wouldn't even, it's not even going to kick in until way late this year, right? We're just thinking, sitting down.
Why don't you just...
Yeah, it's to the exit, it has to take effect. We have an audit, and we are finally ready to dismiss it. We brought that in.
So, forty-two was merit, you said, right?
No, we, we, we can tell the issue. And what's forty-two, goes down the very same reason.
So, nine thousand for the two percent, right?
Yes.
What was the, what was the total merit at the bottom of that?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Total merit.
All right. So, you're one fifty-eight.
We...
It's called democracy.
I decide, but you ask the mayor, what is, I feel a void.
And I just want to clarify, Mike, that's Ms. Janelle. The sheet you sent me, which I brought with me, I did not, but it's where they're at, right?
I, I have it here.
And two percent on what's on here?
No.
Yeah, yes.
Three percent's on here.
You're right.
Right.
You're right.
Look at the bottom, you see the forty-two and the forty-two.
That's the total to reach now. Okay, so we're approving the list here, the annual salary plus two percent cola, zero merit. Everybody's on the same page, yeah. So, what's listed here?
Correct.
Okay?
Correct.
All right.
Well, it's mine.
So, the salary schedule as presented, without...
Has everybody seen that?
Yeah, everyone got it.
Everybody was in the email, guys.
You are, you have it.
So, we're at one fifty-eight.
So, to be clear, to clarify, the salary schedule as presented without merit raises.
Yeah, and only two percent cola.
And two percent cola.
Is this that?
Yeah.
Mayor, just take a quick look, please. So, merit is out, right? So, is two percent forty-two or is three percent forty-two?
Three percent forty-two. He said ninety grand off that, right?
And then, and then... And zero merit.
Zero merit. Zero merit, nine thousand off the cola.
So, two percent of their salary for an increased cola. So, Mr. Alvarez, I'll put you on the spot.
Yes, sir.
For a hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, would you be able to dictate or figure out a street that blocks, that is not CBG eligible or TIF eligible, that we can recommend to our committees as to be repaid since they can't be grant eligible anyway for the hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred thousand approximately of savings?
So, Alderman Bellato, the street repairs depend heavily on the actual condition of the street.
I know, I understand.
And it can vary anywhere between, say, Monwood was in fairly poor condition, when we repaved it, plus about two hundred dollars a foot, and the streets in California Gardens were in much, much better condition, being newer, at about ninety dollars a foot. So, for a street that wanted to pick in like a non-CBG, non-TIP area, you know, probably you would want to pick one that was in fairly bad condition, I think, for a hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, you'd give about eight hundred feet.
So, you'll bring those recommendations through unless you want to cut a few more things, and then we can say to the public, we started somewhere. We need it.
So, we have a motion now for the amended, to the amended?
Now, Mayor, you want to get another eight hundred feet and do the two to five percent cutbacks across the board. That's on you, that's why I put on the table right here.
We'll start here tomorrow, I'll give you mine.
All right, well, we got to approve it, right? So, I...
Okay.
There's no, there's no quorum, right, you're saying?
Yeah, but I don't think there's going to be.
Two percent cola.
So, would you please, would somebody please step up and explain each and every item that is being revised, as the only way that you can make an intelligent vote on this particular , right, hey?
Items that are being revised.
Mr. Marzal, would you go slowly, 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 late?
So that we can mark it.
From the fire department.
Just like a fireway. Yeah, just like a fireway.
Yeah, use mine. There you go.
Alright, is that third, can you hear me?
What page is that? I wanna know.
Uh, fire department is four-twenty, eighty-fifty, cutting ten thousand dollars.
What is that again, for eighty-fifty?
Eighty-fifty.
So you're changing that number to twenty thousand?
Correct.
Okay.
We are eliminating across all departments unemployment, uh, insurance, or unemployment, uh, budget.
That holds twice, because of what?
We didn't spend much last year, and so we're, and if we're not spending on spending this year...
You're eliminating the entire lineup?
Uh, across all departments.
So in any department, it's the unemployment, such as in the fire department, you're eliminating the five thousand dollar limit?
Correct.
At three spots. In how many places?
Across the board, for the entire city.
What's that total?
Then a total of approximately twenty-seven thousand dollars.
For some reason, that number has to be created. You will have to move it from, you make an administrative move from salary to, or one of the salary items, to that.
Correct.
Okay. As long as it's understood.
From the golf course, which is...
Total of elimination of unemployment?
Twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Twenty-seven thousand. Okay.
From the golf course, line item sixty-six fifty-two.
Okay, hold on. Gotta do this all correctly tomorrow.
Okay.
Sixty-six.
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 Fifty-two.
Sixty-six fifty-two.
Fifty-six what?
Fifty-two.
That's thirty thousand.
What should be the parking lot name except for the rear parking lot?
How much? That's thirty thousand.
Zero. We're changing that to zero.
Six-six-five, zero, okay. Alright.
From police, fire, and public works, we're cutting five thousand dollars for each department. Totally fifteen thousand dollars, what's the train, um, number?
What number is that?
Fifty-eight hundred.
Okay, fifty-eight hundred is training in public works?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sixty-one oh five is account number.
Sixty-one oh five. That's building maintenance.
Fifty-eight hundred is training.
We put, we put building maintenance for the training facility, so the, that number is sixty...
Sixty-one ten, sixty-one oh five.
Sixty-one oh five, we're cutting five from, we're, we're cutting a total of fifteen thousand dollars.
Police, fire, and public works.
Yes.
That's in the fire department?
Police, fire.
Fire, and public works.
So you're cutting five thousand for each? Public, police, fire is sixty-one oh five, so that's changing from twenty to fifteen, right?
Correct.
And then, public works, sixty-one oh five, that's changing from ten to five?
Yes.
And police?
This is going, this is going down five, out, eighty-five dollars.
Police is changing from ninety to eighty-five?
Correct.
Okay, so that's a total of fifteen thousand, right?
Correct. For marketing?
What, what account?
Four ninety-five.
Perfect.
Marketing four ninety-five.
Marketing four ninety-five.
Fifty-nine twenty. Reducing that to zero.
Government access, capital. So that's changing from fifteen thousand to zero?
No, no, no.
Sixty-six twenty.
Sixty-six twenty.
Oh. Six-six.
Professional consulting?
Yeah, going to zero.
Six-six twenty is going from twenty-five thousand to zero. Is that correct?
Yes.
But fifty-nine twenty is not being changed?
Fifty-nine twenty is the, uh, capital. Yeah, that's not changing.
It's twenty-five thousand. Okay.
We are reducing the cola for non-union employees from three percent to two percent, which is a savings of nine thousand dollars. And we are eliminating the merit program for non-union employees, which is forty-two thousand dollars.
Merit is being eliminated, cola for non-union is going to reach...
From, uh, it's a savings of nine thousand dollars, as you said, correct, yes, from three percent to two percent.
Okay, so where are we so far?
That's...
Hundred and fifty-eight thousand. So you wanna buy another forty-two, we can make it even to a hundred. We're all working together.
I know.
We're just...
Wait a minute, we're working with the workshop, yeah.
Under general administration, lot and property maintenance, there's twenty-five thousand dollars.
Where's the answer?
What number?
General administration, uh, account number sixty-six fifty-three. There's twenty-five thousand dollars. Looking at what we spent in the past, I think we could reduce that to five thousand, there's another twenty thousand dollars.
What, what number was that again?
Sixty-six fifty-three.
Oh, I see it here. What's your amount difference?
Different, I would say five thousand dollars, that would give us another twenty thousand for savings.
So twenty thousand. So one seventy-eight? Twenty-two thousand, market.
Mr. Polster have a question. Chief?
Go ahead.
I'm talking over here, Mayor, for, uh, you know, call it, uh, seventy thousand, Mayor, and part of that is gonna be, uh, street lights. And, um, we're trying to include the contract, so we're gonna go down to seventy thousand thirty-five, and I am just six...
Thirty-five thousand.
You gotta give us the... We need one person to report these numbers to Mike here, so that we can, because we're doing this kinda on the fly, we're gonna get this downtown this week.
Okay, it is four thirty, six-six two-five. From seventy to thirty-five.
To, what exactly does that mean?
Mr. Polster, what does that mean, what's that line item for?
I mean, it's pretty...
What's it for?
With three engineering.
Okay.
Part of that, uh, what's built in there was, uh, for the light, uh, probably the street lights, uh, but part of the area, or area, we were saying, it should probably be included in the contract, you know, it would be, you know, the bottom base and the electric.
What's that being revised to?
Capital grant.
If we accept that thirty-five, we're to maintain our satisfaction. Okay, Eric, who is, uh, twenty-five, he wants that additional saving, throw it on the streets.
I will make a choice between now and next Wednesday whether additional cuts would be appropriate. But we do agree on what we got now, alright? I know, but again, if one more savings, I want to give more saves, but go ahead. The motion we gotta sign, that's what means appropriate.
Yeah.
So to be clear, to be clear, salary schedule, it was appropriate anywhere else?
That salary schedule that was emailed to the staff, base salary plus two percent, that is it. We all understand that?
Yes.
Alright, Samuel Raines brought up a couple times, so I'm reiterating that. So it was sent to us in email format to all the Alphons weeks ago, base salary plus two percent cola, no merit. Okay, alright.
And is this particular back here would be, so you're going to just take whatever the individual base salary is and add two percent to it?
To all, that's all non-union staff, I see the sheet also had elected officials, obviously, we're not...
Elected officials are all, any elected official is knocked out of us, as are the plumbing inspector and elected, uh...
Non-union staff.
And then you have all of the line items that are being changed, and is, is some of this money being then transferred to another account, is that...
Street, street resurfacing.
Alright, and that, how are you reflecting, man?
I believe the account number, unless it's, uh, unless I got the wrong one, is under public works department four thirty, seventy-three thirty, is that the right one? Would that where street repairs come out of, Mike? Street resurfacing, I think I'm, uh, street resurfacing, we wanna see a few blocks of streets done.
Hold on, what line is in?
I believe it's, it says street resurfacing and repair under four thirty, seventy-three thirty.
Seventy-three thirty, there.
How do you have a seventy-three thirty?
Under public works department?
I put that in, that's the same number as, uh...
Where would that go, Mike?
We will create a different number.
Alright, for two hundred and, where do we, two hundred thirteen thousand? For street resurfacing, and then Eric will go to the appropriate committees of finance and municipal services, pick a street that's not CBG or TIP eligible, or in bad condition, wherever, wherever's the situation.
I bought every street in town, I've seen fourth and, uh, fourth and fifth, that probably were streets.
Here is the line item, but we don't have seventy-three thirty, we have a new line item.
He said he had created a new one.
Two hundred thirteen thousand dollars?
Yes.
So we, seventy-one twenty-five, I'm sure, that's, that's hers.
Seventy-one twenty-five, councilman.
So that's gonna be a new account in public works?
And it's gonna be seventy-one twenty-five under the...
Okay, which? If, if we don't get this right, it's going to be a mess, so I'd rather spend the additional few minutes to get this straight. You're creating a new account, seven-one-two-five.
Correct.
And it's going to be in public works, in four thirty, public works.
Correct.
And it's going to be two hundred thirteen thousand dollars?
Correct.
Seven-one-two-five. Our treasurer has a question, go ahead.
Question I have here, Mr. Marsala, for the corporate authority. There's a second page, contingency for police, police department contingency appropriation, one hundred and six thousand. And public works buildings and grounds, a hundred thousand. Am I under, under the understanding that contingency is only if, Mr. Marsala, or the mayor, or somebody comes to counsel and requests that, move that money for some usage, whatever we're short? So we all agree with it? Or am I misunderstood about contingency on line item? Because otherwise, we have one hundred and six thousand dollars for the police department. I'm assuming this contingency that comes back to the corporate authority, that we're short in that department, or for the necessity for the police department to function, that Mr. Marsala, the mayor, or myself, or someone has to come up and say, corporate authority, we need to move this money from here to wherever is necessary. So we're all clear on this? Because the Metro Parkemas is still not answered, so...
Just regarding the question, President, pardon me, last, we had a meeting last week with the representative of Metro. He's gonna get clarification on that, hopefully, this coming week, within the next two weeks, we'll get clarification as to all those parkemas. Yes. Right, all the committee.
With all this reduction in different ones, what, what are we saving? What, what is the dollar amount?
Two hundred thirteen thousand.
What?
We're not saving, we're not saving.
I understand that.
Two hundred thirteen thousand.
Okay.
So the motion would be to adopt the appropriation order, first to amend the appropriation order in accordance with the items discussed and agreed upon, and redistribute the two hundred thirteen thousand dollars of expenses that have been cut to the new account, seven-one-two-five, under public works. Do you have a favorite statement?
Yeah.
Yes.
Someone say it, I'll make that motion. Motion, say it.
Wait, 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 I just wanna, clerk brought up, I wanna, we're approving the, uh, off, the sheet that was emailed to us, because it's our individual salary, huh? Yes, okay, yes.
That's the first motion, is to make that amendment?
Yes.
Motion, second, uh, motion. Motion, Valdo, Valdo, Viera?
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hosling.
Hi.
Hosling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Valdo.
Hi.
Valdo, hi, Viera.
Thank you, Alderman, hi.
So now that motion is asked, now will be to adopt the appropriation orders as of then.
Motion, Holly, hold, uh, second, Valdo, Roca.
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hosling.
Hi.
Hosling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Johnson.
Hi.
Johnson, hi, Valdo.
Hi.
Valdo, hi, Viera.
The city will move forward, hallelujah, hi.
Hi.
We still got half a minute.
Committee reports, committee's going.
General report, your honor, our next meeting is on, uh, March, uh, April tenth, at seven o'clock. My next committee.
Okay, our next committee met on March nineteenth, members present, Alden Frost, Ali, Fairwell, Thompson, Hosling, and Alden Viera was absent. Also present was Ali Talbot and Barbara McCallan. Committee approved the accounts payable for March twenths, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of, and I'm afraid to give out these amounts, but five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents. I'm asking for a motion and a second.
So motion, the second, Valdo.
Does that, who's the motion?
Valdo, Hosling, and then second, Valdo, Roca.
Holly, hi, Holly, hi, Fairwell.
Hi.
Fairwell, hi, Hosling.
Hi.
Hosling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no, Valdo.
Hi.
Valdo, hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi, Viera has one, no.
Okay, committee also approved the payroll for March eighth, two thousand nineteen, in the amount of three hundred sixty-two thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. I need a motion and a second.
Motion, second, Valdo, Pittman, any questions, Roca?
Holly.
Hi.
Holly, hi, Farinwell.
Hi.
Farinwell, hi, Osling.
Hi.
Osling, hi, Thompson.
Hi.
Thompson, hi, Carr.
Hi.
Carr, hi, Pittman.
Hi.
Pittman, hi, Johnson.
No.
Johnson, no, Vlado.
Hi.
Vlado, hi, Viera.
Hi.
Viera, hi, Viera's in one, no.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Barbara McClellan discussed her water bill with the committee. Now she had gone before municipal services and they came up with an agreement reducing her bill to eighty-seven dollars, fourteen dollars over six months. The committee agreed and voted to accept municipal services agreement. There was a roll call vote. Alderman Frosto, yes, Alderman Holly, yes, Alderman Farinwell, yes, Alderman Osling, yes, and Alderman Thompson, no. The motion did carry.
Alderman, may I just make one statement on that? We, I think we also agreed that was a one-time...
A one-time, I'm so sorry, I didn't say, it's a one-time exception that municipal services made. Okay. So, our next meeting of finance would be April second, however, that is the election. So I will bring accounts payable and payroll to the next city council on April ninth for approval. No further business, the meeting was adjourned. Thank you.
And the public health and safety committee?
No report, your honor, but I do have a question for the mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, does our police chief have the full-time job with another agency?
So right now, it's in discussion, he is on his way out.
He's on his way out, what?
Chief, want to give me the information?
Please, come forward. It's a practice, um, April eighth, I will be officially retiring. Um, I would like to thank you for the service. But one thing I would like to say before I retire, it's been a pleasure serving this community, it's been a true pleasure. But from the moment I took office, I have to say it's been difficult. Alderman Carr has been a glory in my side. She made my job so difficult and criticized everything that I have tried to do. And she failed to give me the respect that I deserve. The same respect that she gave to the prior administrations. It wasn't right, and I, I don't know what to say about that. You should have gave us the chance, you never did. You criticized the people I brought up, you criticized me trying to better the department all for your political reasons. And that wasn't right, and that wasn't fair. I don't know what it was for, whether because I'm African-American, yet because I'm a, uh, a nice guy. I have always been approachable. You come in with me with anything, any problem, I will try to fix it. You didn't give me that opportunity. And reason why you didn't give me that opportunity, because of your ties with other political parties. You use this department as a political crux. I could go on, Alderman Carr. The things that I said to each Alderman in confidence for you to go out and tell your constituents, you used that information to get back at the mayor. It wasn't right, and you shouldn't have done it. You don't know what you're referring to. Should I? Tell her, tell her. Everything that I said, you would give to Carol Green, to echo those words for the mayor. And the only way she would find out is through you and an email that I sent out to all the constituents. She knew things that was confident to the emails that I sent to you and every other Alderman in here. That information was used for you, that without constituents, and not for you to go to battle with the mayor with. I have never sent any information... That is not true. To Carol... You have sit in, in the council meetings, and you have blatantly lied, and I didn't say anything about it. You had spread a rumor that we didn't want to patrol, it was a lie. You're coming to my office to do battle with me, Mrs. Carr. Do battle.
Chief.
And we're trying to approve a budget, and you want to know about stats. Why crying and went up? Well, that's a legitimate question. And we told you, we gave you a legitimate answer, but you didn't want to hear that.
Chief. Excuse me. Chief, you have a question?
Yes.
Are you working anywhere full-time right now?
Full-time?
Yes.
Yes, I am.
How long have you held the position?
About fifteen days.
All right. So are you at the station during normal business hours?
Why do you...
Are you at the station during normal business hours?
After hours, I'm on vacation.
After hours.
Using all my vacation time, and after vacation, I come in and the truck blew out into the area.
I'm just, I'm curious, when did, I'm glad you earned your retirement.
Yes, thank you.
I've known you for years. When did you make this decision? And I'm just curious how long, and I'd like to have known, you know?
Okay, actually, I was unsure, really I was. But what pushed me over there, thank you, Miss Candace Carr. Because I figured that it'd be better off wherever I go to than to sit here and deal with your political shenanigans. Really, it did, and I'm saying truthfully. If it wasn't any better, I probably would have stayed. But she made me, nobody, it's just not worth it, to have to come in here and not only deal with the people in the city, which I have no problem with, but to deal with someone that chaired the committee, the committee of health and public safety that's against me, that's hard to do. It's a hard pill to swallow.
So is there, is there a plan in place for replacement? If you are, are you...
Yeah, we, we, we're gonna, that's the mayor and I and the deputy chief, so we're gonna be working on a replacement. Like I say, I got a lot of projects that I would like to continue to do, especially with the community. Yes, I would. But unfortunately, some Aldermen didn't give me a fair chance. Why don't you let her replace them, she wants? You wanted to do my job? I, I want to know what information you think I gave Carol Green? Everything. What information didn't you give her? I don't give Carol Green information. I'm done, she back there. Oh, thank you. Sorry to lose you, chief. And I'm sorry you have to go out this way. It, it's not a problem. I really enjoyed the twenty-one years of serving this community, it's been my pleasure. And I'm always going to be here for this community, because my heart is here, no matter what an Alderman say about it, the police don't care about this community. I hate to sit here and listen to that stuff and bite my tongue. There's no reason for me to bite my tongue now, Mr. Alderman Carr. You was born for the beginning and you're wrong now. Yeah, let her run the town.
That is the best care programs that ever came to Blue Island. I witnessed that myself personally. I seen him interact with children of all colors and ages and was able to solve some crimes through his relationships with them. Thank you, uh, for your service.
You're welcome. It'd be hard to replace you, and my heart is broken. But I know when you dealing with a racist person, you have to give it to them. Yes, that's what you are, racist. That's what you are. If you want to carry it in and follow, we can go out in the alley.
Municipal services to me?
Anything else you didn't know, Ms. Carr, about me? You didn't have my number, you couldn't call me. You didn't have to put me on the air, man, like you just did. That's why you get what you deserve.
Judiciary committee?
All right, judiciary committee met Tuesday, March nineteenth, and called to order at six oh five P M. in the East Annex. Present were Alderman Farinwell, Pittman, Pulos, Slattery, and Alderman Viera was absent. Also present was Mark Marzello, Director of Finance Administration. There was no public comment. We approved the minutes of the February nineteenth meeting, moved by Alderman, Pulos, seconded by Pittman, or passed by a voice vote. A subject of malt treated at vicious dogs was discussed following a previous discussion. Director Marzello reported that we have inadequate ordinance, but insufficient funding to hire a canine officer. BIPD makes every effort to handle loose dogs properly. Given all that, no further committee action is planned. Traffic congestion near Bev lab in Eisenhower High School was further reviewed from a previous meeting. Director Marzello reported that Chief King has spoken with the school resource officer, who is supposed to be placing barricades to manage school traffic. Judiciary committee will await further, uh, to make further action if warranted. The alley north of one-hundred-and-twenty-third street and west of its ends, an ordinance is pending, still pending before a planning commission, which had canceled its March meeting for lack of a quorum, but will be taken up again in the April fourth agenda. Whitehead signs on Cooper's Grove. A sign has been placed at one-hundred-and-thirty-ninth Ann Cooper's Grove, and we're going to see how that does. There's other possible ways have to deal with county, but we wanted to see what effect that had first. And regarding congestion on Highland between Union and York, which occurs at school pickup and drop-off times of the bus. There's a question about restricting parking to one side, weekdays, seven to eight A M. and afternoons, two to three P M. The city has monitored the area once, saw no problems, but will review again because there are continuing complaints. Regarding the Chevy Tahoe's issue, we reported on disposition of the vehicles. They determined that the, our city attorney has determined that the Secretary of State's office will not determine ownership until any criminal investigation is complete. City attorney will contact the Illinois Department of Revenue to determine if they will make a finding based on the sales tax owed to the state. The issue of any outstanding fines will also be addressed with the Department of Revenue. BIPD will wait any further inspection of the vehicles until they need to be removed from their secure storage. Questions to the mayor are still pending. He has stated in the public meeting that he cannot answer questions until the discussions he is having with federal investigative body are concluded. There were also staff claim, there were claim recommendations, Alderman concerns, where I requested the placement of Whitehead signs on Greenwood and Vermont and one-hundred-and-twenty-third street to reduce the number of garage trucks illegally traveling on the side of the street. Motion to move by Alderman Pulos, seconded by Alderman Viera, voice vote passed. Meeting adjourned at six twenty-four P M. and the next meeting will be Tuesday, April sixteenth, six P M. in the East Annex.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Now we do have closed session.
Yes, uh, mayor, I was wondering, do we have a ballpark figure of time for these, uh, this investigation with these Tahos? And the next question is, uh, we voted on a domain name, but this guy happens to have a G-Pass domain name. I'm wondering why is it cut off and why we can't use it?
Again, I got to repeat again, given the person who I've been speaking to for the last couple of months, I cannot disclose any of that information. It's under that person, that agency's authority. And again, they don't want me to release anything, and so that investigation is completed. No obstruction, no collusion, anything like that, so I have to abide by what the Congress...
Okay, so does that include like those toes?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Who's going to be responsible for them?
All of that, all of that.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, need to, a motion to retire, to close session, consideration of pending litigation in motion of Polly, Farinwell, all in favor?
Hi.
If there's anybody left from the school, I'm just thinking, sure. Need a motion to reconvene? Motion, Alderman Harris, Farinwell, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Council?
But the record shows there is a form present of nine Aldermen as listed on the clerk's tally sheet. In closed session, we discussed two matters. One was the discussion of ongoing litigation and a pending lawsuit between the individual and the city. The other was in the case of Carl versus Skoladik. The other was a report by me of a resolution of a contract between the city and what was accompanied formerly known as COLA Grad, where the agreement was reached by the city in COLA Grad. COLA Grad will waive the second year, the second remaining year of the contract or payment under the second remaining year of the contract, and the city will make its final payment of eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars to COLA Grad. We get a vote on that to approve that agreement.
Need a motion?
Yes.
Need a motion, Alderman Farinwell, seconded by Alderman Nancy Thompson. Any questions? Roll call.